Hey, aloha kakao, welcome everyone. Thank you for having me here and thank you to the League for hosting today's meeting. This is an honor to be here and speak with you and kind of connect about issues in, you know, in North and South Kauhala, but also speak kind of broadly about the county in general. So I'm grateful to be here, be a part of this conversation and dialogue as you promote, you know, openness in our governance, especially at the county level with our Sunshine Law and really representing the community in an open space and open setting. So thank you for having me here today. I really appreciate all of you and the work that you do for our communities here. As it comes to voting, as it comes to a responsible governance, so thank you for having me here. I'm going to share a couple of slides and we'll kind of go through a couple of things here. And I'd love to spend some time answering your questions and the thoughts that you have about, you know, how we all become better leaders and better stewards for our communities and responsible members of our community. So I'm going to just share this here. I believe you all can see that now. Alright. So thank you for the introduction. That's very kind and generous words. And a lot of that, you know, I've committed to the community and my wife was here with us as well. We've both been residents of Waimea for over thirty years, myself over thirty years and Alex a little bit longer now. And the Waimea community and the districts and the communities of North and South Kauhala really resonate with us. When we both went away for our college years and traveled abroad, Waimea and Northway called us back and we returned here to really dive into the community and support community efforts and community endeavors to be a part of the community, to engage with community partners, to join different groups, volunteer efforts, boards, commissions, those sort of things. And we really saw it as an opportunity to kind of give back to the community that raised us and the leaders that came before us. So it was a really an honor to be back in the space. And then of course, last year, run for political office, it was my first endeavor to run, to represent the community at large. Serving on different community organizations was a one aspect of representing our communities. But diving deeper into politics and public office was a big, big leap and a big step. And I'm grateful and honored and humbled by the support that was shown to have me step forward and represent the communities. And there, there's a bit of work to do though, for sure. And I think a lot of you recognize that across the board from our national politics to state and local governance. There's a lot of work to do and we're, myself included, I look to you as a community to kind of prop us up and support us in our endeavors as we move forward. So there's definitely partnership that goes beyond what we do day to day in the community, but really working together to find solutions on a lot of projects. So I'm really grateful to be here and kind of talk about a couple of these things. So I wanted to dive in, a couple of slides here, just talk about, you know, the county council. What, what's been happening recently at the county level as well with our executive side and things that have come before council? As well as some of the district priorities, some of the things that I personally see as priorities, as well as things that have come to me over the past year, really understanding and diving deeper into the community and the concerns that people have, to find solutions and looking for leadership to drive on a lot of these points going forward. And then it's also, as I mentioned, it's, it's about collaboration, it's about working together. So for me, it's a call out to you and a call to action to kind of support systems, support your leaders in the community and also get involved. And then of course, there's some contact information on our office here. So the district of North and South Kauhala, mostly South Kauhala, District Nine is a large geographic, you know, region on island. Not the biggest geographic region of course, but there are a lot of diverse and unique communities across North and South Kauhala. So we have, of course, we're here in Waimea today. We have our coastal communities of Waikoloa, Puoko, Kuaiahi. Our more Mauka communities like Waiki and Waimea of course, and then our North Kauhala communities. We have a number of different communities of Havi, Kapau, Haleula and Neuli'i and many small spaces in between, right? We all, you know, we identify with a lot of these places and we travel to and fro from them quite often. And we're very much connected in a lot of things we do across North and South Kauhala. A lot of different needs, lots of different issues across the district, of course. And so at the end of the day, it's really coming together collectively to work on these challenges together. The picture on the left, of course, is the representation of the district, what the district looks like on a map. And then my staff on the lower right-hand side. So with me, this is at our inauguration date, the beginning of December. It's grateful to be joined by Kendra Bruno who's in the audience today. She is the district's council aide. She's our district council aide. So she'll be really in the Waimea office for, for the most part, unless I pull her to different locations all the time. And then Dennis Kauka Junior, he has family members up in the North Kauhala area, of course, but he lives in Hilo with his family. And he's our legislative assistant. So he'll be really operative of our Hilo office in that space there. He's well versed in a lot of things with legislative review. He's worked with administration. So he really has some background and knowledge about the systems that are going on. Just for a frame of reference, this is where our, our main district office will be in Waimea. This is at Parker Square. And so if you want to stop by at some point, we're in Suite 109 on the ground floor. So easier ADA accessibility there. We are also maintaining a little spot up in Kapau at the, at the old courthouse up there. And that's a place where people can provide remote testimony and I'm happy to engage and meet with the community in that space as well. There may be a shared, the shared opportunity with research and development in that area as well, but looking to maintain that for the North Kauhala community. You know, when I speak about, you know, central district in the office, most council members don't have a remote office in their district. Most of them rely on either the Hilo chambers or the Kona chambers and constituents can meet with them there. And really that's where their staff is day in, day out. But given our, you know, remoteness and geographic kind of distance from Kona to Hilo, and I think your past and my predecessor and past representatives of this district have really sought out to have, you know, a place where the constituents can meet. And, you know, having here in Waimea is really central to the district, but I'm happy to be in North Kauhala as well and connect with the residents in that area. And just a frame of reference, the Waik County Council, so we have nine members on the council. So these are my colleagues and in clockwise order, you can see our, our next representative is Heather Kimble in the Hamakua District. And then of course, along the lines like Jen Kaugiwata, Dennis Roshonishi, Ashley Kirkowitz, Matt Cunnily-Kleinfelder, Michelle Galimba, Rebecca Viegas and Huleka Inaba kind of on our more North Kauhala sides. So those are your representatives on the county council and I'm, like I said, I'm honored to be your representative here for North and South Kauhala. Huleka Inaba is our chair for the council and we all serve on different committees as well. So it gets a little confusing. We have your nine council members and we have council days and we have committee days. But all of your council members serve on the committees. It's a little bit different from the other counties where some, there may be a different makeup and only a few of the members serve on a committee. But all of your nine council members serve on all the committees and each one of us chair a, one of those committees. So for myself included, I am chairing the Public Works and Mass Transit Committee. And I serve as the vice chair on the Finance Committee and our chair for that committee is Matt Cunnily-Kleinfelder. So that's just a kind of a little snippet of, of the inner workings of the council there. And typically on, you know, on a rotation of our council days and our committee days, we meet every other week. For this past week, we were in Kona for two days. We had a committee day on a Tuesday and a council day on a Wednesday. And then so next week, we're really off, except for one exception, which I'll get to in a little bit. And then in two weeks' time, we'll be in Hilo. So it kind of rotates back before to Hilo and Kona every other week. So a couple of other things that you're, you're probably more aware of and you're familiar with, we've had also some executive and leadership changes at administrative level. So Mr. Alameda, Kimo Alameda is our new mayor for Hawaii County. And Mr. Bill Brahanthe is his managing director, who was an appointed position. And I can get into the next slide, we'll talk about some other appointments. And then Merrick Nishimoto is the deputy managing director. And they kind of really split the island as well. So Merrick will really be on the west side for the most of the time. And then Bill really tags with Kimo and will be on the east side. But that managing director is one of our, you know, key appointed positions in the county. We have a lot of different departments that represent the executive side, administrative side of our county, county body and county municipality. And Mr. Bill Brahanthe was one of those appointed directors and the managing director, really that, that right-hand man, right-hand individual for the mayor in the stead that the mayor's off-island or in any sort of emergency, the managing director steps in that place. So along with Mr. Brahanthe, you know, that was an appointment that the mayor makes. And we all had an opportunity to vote this last year on the ballot to consider whether, and this was on the, the county charter, whether we, the mayor has a shorter window of time to appoint directors. And so that initiative moved forward. So the mayor has a thirty-day window to appoint directors for the appointed roles in the, in the executive branch. So it's a shorter time of window that we often now will see going forward. It was ninety days previously from my understanding, so thirty days now. And so there was a short window to kind of bring, bring these appointees forward. So the council heard from nine appointees. And along with Mr. Brahanthe, these were the other eight appointees that were just received by the council and went through the whole confirmation process. So initially they came before the committee and they'll have a committee hearing day first. And that was the first time we engaged with them. That was a couple of, about four weeks ago now. And then just this past Wednesday, before the full council, that these directors were confirmed and approved. And so we have, up at the top, we have Diane Nakagawa, our Director of Finance, Mr. Hugh Ono, Director of Public Works, Clayton Honma with Parks and Recreation, Corey Stone, Information Technology, Renee Shown as Corporation Counsel. Now Corporation Counsel is a unique one because it's not specifically with the administration. This is our, kind of our lead attorney for the county and they represent the county at, at large, at whole. So also the county council members as well. So it's an interesting, yes, it's a, that individual's appointed by the mayor, but they also are kind of like our legal advisor and their office is our legal advice for the council as well. Mr. Jeff Darrow is the Director of Planning and Benson Medina for Research and Development. Now I have Wes Segawa up here on the, on the slides as well because he did come before council as an appointed, as an appointee for environmental management. His vote for confirmation failed on Wednesday. And this Friday, we're having a special meeting with council to reconsider his appointment. So he'll be coming back before the council this next week, Friday. So it'll be a special meeting. You may have seen some announcement about a special meeting coming up and that'll be one of the items on, on the agenda to reconsider his appointment for the role. And I can really dive into some of the other things from the Q and A and I can go a little bit further, questions about that. I, I just wanted to touch on a couple of, you know, key priorities for District Nine, you know, that I mentioned at the top that are important for me as well as important for the districts. And it doesn't dive into the, all the very specifics of things. It's, it's kind of very broad and general. So I could speak on a couple of different things. They're, they're really in no particular order here, but the top one of infrastructure is key for me in terms of connecting a lot of their pieces, as well as talking about affordability and housing, all these sort of things. And a lot of the environmental challenges that we're also facing. So infrastructure kind of is this large catch-all phrase for a lot of the things that, that we're facing. And this, this ranges from our roads, it ranges from, you know, wastewater infrastructure and solid waste infrastructure, as well as energy and working with our, our, you know, our public utilities and those private companies to really kind of push forward on, you know, these, these goals that we have at the state level by twenty forty-five, twenty fifty to have this hundred percent renewable energy goals. Then it's also really about resilience. It's kind of that, the next big, big one for me about how are we prepared for, as a community, as an individual, but for our, as our county level and our state level? How are we prepared for disaster events? How are we addressing climate change impacts and then prepare it as a community? And how do we as, as government, you know, support community in this sort of venue? Whether it's with part of facilities in our communities or communication efforts and making sure that our residents are, that, that receive the most accurate and up-to-date information about broadcasts and alerts. We also have, you know, a major, major need across the west side of the island and North Hawaii on our community spaces and our community facilities. So these are our park spaces where we, at the end of a busy week, we go with our family, we can decompress, watch sports games and be in those spaces, whether it's at the beach, ball fields. These are really important, you know, morale boosting places in our community that we need to better maintain. And we need to push forward on the next phase in at these spaces. So, and I can speak specifically to the ones across North and South Kauhala. I mean, we have challenges across the board, right? And some of these are not only, you know, managed by the county, some of them are also state, state projects with DLNR. So we can talk about Polulu, for example, right? We have up on our northern end of island, we have challenges with, you know, overcrowding at times and parking issues. And so we're working with our state partners and the state contractor to really push forward on the plans for that area. And, but the county comes into play about the road itself. So that's where that infrastructure piece kind of overlaps with a lot of these community spaces. And how do we connect the piece that was donated to the lookout, to the trailhead? And how to provide, you know, safety, pedestrian safety through that area? So that's an ongoing conversation. Also in North Kauhala, we have, you know, beautiful park facilities and the mayor's been taking like a strong initiative to repair and replace and maintain a lot of these spaces. We've seen improvement in those areas over time. And then one of those, you know, coming down on the coastline, we have our Mahu Kona Beach Park. And this is a ongoing conversation with Rep Tarnus about, you know, providing some additional dollars to improve some of that area, kind of on the Wharf side. There's an ongoing conversation with him, but then the county also has a responsibility to manage and maintain the safety of that area. And we've had ongoing community conversations about, you know, what is, what does the Mahu Kona Beach Park look like going forward? So I'm grateful to attend those meetings up in Kapau with Uncle Jeff Coakley, coach up there and the community to really envision the next, the next phase for a lot of that area. And it's really working with our community partners, you know, in that kind of fashion to really, you know, build on those relationships, to establish friends of the park initiatives. Because I know community wants to dive in and jump in and help with all these projects that really give and koukua. And we really need to strengthen, you know, that relationship between Parks and Rec and the community to help bring these things forward faster sometimes. But we also seen great progress in the Waikoloa community about some of these parks and a lot of things moving forward there. Still more to do, of course. And then here in Waimea, there's, and I actually attended, I was invited by a couple of constituents to actually visualize the use of our Waimea Park. And the demand a lot of those spaces have on them. And really the, the lack of maintenance that we've seen in those spaces where foul balls can fly through the backstop because it's been kind of, you know, duct taped or, you know, really matched together in some areas. So there are a lot of challenges and I recognize, I recognize those. I'm willing to work with the community and really bring these issues forward with Parks and Rec. Housing is one of those big topics and this is something that a lot of our council members will speak on. I'm grateful, I stepped forward at a previous committee and council meeting to be a part of our ad hoc housing committee, kind of like a, you know, separate of the council, but working with Office of Housing and Community Development and three other council members to really identify housing, looking at, you know, Chapter Eleven and really pushing forward on what, what are the next initiatives that we can do on housing? And there are, there are plethora of projects happening across the district of North and South Kauhala that are, that are talking about workforce housing, more affordable housing. And there are a lot of community initiatives that I'm, I'm, you know, grateful to support and want to be a part of as we address some of these challenges with housing. And it's all about, you know, the, the infrastructure piece connects this as well, where cost of living, affordability, we have a big challenge with wastewater where we have nearly sixty thousand cesspools on the island. We are mandated by the State Department of Health to convert all of them by twenty forty-five. And we're, we're not on track, to be honest with you. We have a long way to go. We're not, we're not converting at a rate we should be. There are not enough engineers, not enough, you know, to stamp forms and do the plan reviews and all these sort of things. And this is adding to, in my mind, this is adding to that cost of living piece where, you know, we've mandated, the states mandated you as a homeowner and us as county to, to move forward on these pieces and really make the conversion from, you know, these maybe antiquated outdated cesspools to septic. But that's putting a cost and a burden on you technically if that evolved. We don't really have the funding. At the moment, nothing's really been set aside. Nothing's, nothing remains in any of the funds that were set aside to help families convert. So you're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars around that price tag. I've heard higher numbers for individuals to kind of convert their systems. We don't really have, in, especially in our rural communities, we don't have, you know, larger treatment facilities or ones that we can easily tap into. And of course, there's always a hookup cost for families on that too. Having ongoing conversations with the Puoko residents to make, make that a possibility with the potential connection with a private enterprise there. So that's an ongoing conversation about maybe, you know, more immediate solutions we can find. Of course, we'd have to improve the systems that are there as well because there are other challenges. But I see that, you know, there's that link between, you know, affordability and infrastructure and what government is also coming to the table to help, help offset some of these costs for families on our island here. And then moving on to agriculture, North Kauhala, South Kauhala, these are really, you know, you know, you can look at Hamakua as well. These are really our big breadbasket and potential breadbasket for the state. So we really need to pay more attention and more investment in our agricultural systems. Work with our farmers, train the next, you know, next cadre and group and youth to move forward and really understand that this is a need in our community. We have wonderful programs that run by volunteers across the district that are helping to showcase the skills that are needed to kind of move forward on our agricultural systems. This is also, speaks to our self-reliance and how we can limit the, the impact of, you know, influx of, of goods and products that are being shipped here on a regular basis. So how can we be better stewards of our, our waste systems by, by growing here and eating what we can grow here? Those are, you know, those ongoing conversations about that. And it also speaks to our healthy living and really, you know, really working, working, working the land here to move forward on those sort of projects. On the economic development side, there is that ag tourism piece that we often hear and talk about. And having a conversation with the Director of Research and Development, Mr. Medina, they're looking to revive the Ag Tourism Summit. So there's some conversations going on about that, about how do we, you know, attract more growth and economic, you know, development in, in that agricultural sector as well. And then at the end of it all is about this, this word that's often overused and I, I can see some in the audience that point, point I missed. Don't, don't use that word all the time, but it's about collaboration and connection with, with you, with the community, with my colleagues, with the administration and, and helping move a lot of these, a lot of these projects forward. And really trying to build a relationship and span the gap of differences and those sort of things. Which, which pushes me to my, my next call is really out to you, which is out to the community and call to action. And this ranges from volunteering in a community and I see all of you here in the audience who volunteer your time and dedicate your time to the community. You know, giving back countless hours to support systems, support your neighbors and really support your community at the end of the day. So I'm grateful for the work that you do in your community. There's, there's always opportunities to testify and comment, whether it's on county legislation or the state legislation. And the League does a wonderful job of trying to educate and provide those resources to community about how do you do that? You know, how do I, you, you, you asked me to testify and provide feedback or call my representative. What does that look like? Where, where can I find that, those resources, information? So I'm grateful for the League for providing those resources and being part of that conversation. And then kind of jumping off on the, the volunteering side, here at the county, we have our, our boards and commissions. There are also state boards and commissions too, but we also need your support to help move county governance forward. There are particular boards that help move the government, you know, faster with our salary commission, our police commission and fire commission that make the operation of the government here at the county level move, move better. We also have opportunities on, on conservation. Yeah, so there's, and then of course, looking at our general plan is a big one too. Looking to get involved and serving on boards with that. And of course, attending community meetings is a big one. I love attending communities and kind of learning how, how the community's involved and engaged. And I apologize if I was a little late. I was coming from Malama Pono Kauhala, talking about domestic violence in the community. So looking for, to support a lot of these initiatives across, across the community and represent, that represent, you know, a diverse community here. And lastly, asking those questions. So that's why I kind of want to leave it with you and kind of dive into some more, some more specifics. And this is just some key points of contact that you can reach me at. This, this number goes to our Hilo office. We're, we're finalizing that number in the Waimea office. I think we've got it squared away, but we'll put that out there when we can. And this QR code is a link tree. So it's, it's a kind of a composite of a lot of different information about the county, about ways to testify, about our boards and commissions, as well as a number of key studies, environmental assessments of our projects in the region too. Whether that ranges from the general plan, so there's a large document moving forward. I think that a lot of you have heard of that, that term. And what it's presenting to the community and the vision for our county at large, as well as very specific infrastructure projects around wastewater, solid waste and key, key road projects like the Waikaka Bridge project or Waikoloa Roundabout. So there's some links on there about specific projects. If you're kind of interested in learning more about those that are unique to North and South Kauhala. So I think, I think I went on long enough, if that's okay. Thank you. But I'd love to dive into some questions and take your questions and see where this goes. Yeah, thank you.
Maybe we can go back to the priorities side. And yeah, and we'll, Alexi, you can also see if there are questions in the chat. And maybe, is there a question here? I saw some hands. Here, are there questions in the chat?
I sent a question on the forum.
Oh, can you stand?
Not very well.
Oh, okay. Nevermind, just yell.
What's your main priority here in your district?
The one, even though I said it wasn't really in any sort of rank or order, infrastructure is, is one of those key pieces. And I know that, that covers a lot of different topics, whether it's from our wastewater treatment. So I'll take a step on that. So the Puoko community, for a long time, they've been, you know, they, a lot of them have had, had the capacity to convert personally their cesspools to septic systems. And we need to move forward on connecting with them with the Mauna Loa private system there. So this is an opportunity for a public-private partnership in that area. But one of my, you know, large priorities for the district that I think that community in particular, the Puoko community, about a hundred or so homes there, have really had a concerted effort to find a solution. They've put in their own dollars to do studies of the reef and studies of engineering of what it would take to kind of hook up with the existing systems there. And it's working with the executive, with the mayor and Department of Environmental Management on moving forward. You know, make, you know, finalizing that memorandum and then moving those processes forward to help fund. You know, there's a wide spectrum of, of capability in the community there too. So it's also supporting the families that don't have the means to connect. So we do have to find and happen to forward on that. Also in a, in a similar vein, a similar region on the Waikoloa community. And particularly with our leeward side of the islands, you know, fire and fire preparedness, fire safety, it should be top, top of mind for all of our residents, whether it's during, you know, extreme storms or extreme weather events. We're seeing multi-year drought conditions. So there's this ongoing concern, lasting concern about what does that look like for the communities and the communities that are expanding as well. So we look at Waikoloa Village and they're projected to, you know, double in size in the next ten years. So there's an inherent risk in that community of the extreme, extreme weather, the dry conditions that surround that community. And what do we do and what is our responsibility as government to safeguard those residents? So infrastructure is a, is a key piece to that about our, our water systems, but also a potential road network for that community. And, and really pushing forward on that initiative. And there's great collaboration between community partners with a, with a newly formed or shortly formed nonprofit in the community, the Wildfire Safety Advocates of Waikoloa. And they've been, you know, one of those very, very dogged and kind of working on, working for, and working with administration, past administration and new administration, as well as their legislators, county and state to find a path forward. And then of course, working with the private landowners and developers in that area. There is potential with our state partners to fund a key intersection as part of that piece. We have county housing projects in that area. So the county has an onus to provide some of that safeguarding, those, that infrastructure for that area. Yes, I'm going to jump over here. That's okay.
Um, yeah. Can you speak towards the owl?
Yes, maybe this has been considered already. I don't know, but I'm, I live in Hilo, so I'm ignorant about what's going on in Waikoloa to any great in detail. But I noticed there's like a huge solar installation there. And would that be affected by a fire if it came through? And have any provisions been made to, you know, garden it against that threat?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, I had an opportunity to meet with the Helco administrators a couple of weeks back and really had it in their Hilo, in their Hilo offices. I really got to see behind the scenes of a lot of their grid network and the reliance on a lot of our systems and how, how fragile it can be sometimes too. I also had an opportunity to visit at the Puna Geothermal Venture. That was an interesting, I'd never seen that firsthand. It was great to kind of witness and be in that space and understand kind of how, how reliant we are on some of these key pieces of our diverse grid. So with a, with a goal of, you know, a state goal of moving forward to hundred percent renewable energy supply, we have, we have some work to do. And you know, White Electric, Helco here, they've really moved forward on a lot of large-scale solar infrastructure. So the one you see outside Waikoloa Village is a thirty-megawatt solar farm. They have a battery capacity as well. And seeing behind the scenes at White Electric, it was amazing to see how they toggle on and off those batteries when they're, when they need it to distribute across the grid. It's a really unique resource that we can kind of, you know, dispatch when needed. The solar panels themselves and the same with wind and same with hydro, some of these things are not considered dispatchable. They're, they're only operating when those conditions are, are prime. So, you know, wind turbines are only going to operate when there's wind, the solar's when the sun's out, hydro when there's enough water coming down our streams. And the, the solar farm, you know, that, those conversations have happened. There's, I'll, I'll jump to the fire safety on that a little bit. I'll, I'll jump to the fire safety on that a little bit, uh, just some backstory that, so there's a thirty-megawatt one there along Waikolo Road. There's another thirty-megawatt one that's coming online outside of Waimea, near the concrete plant. And then there are some plans moving forward for some larger ones. I know Helco is looking at other opportunities to expand uh solar. Especially in this, especially in our leeward communities where the solar radiation is, is high and they're looking at those. But. Yeah, you, you are correct. The fire safety, especially in those key infrastructure pieces should be considered at all times. If this is, if we're reliant on these systems, you know, we need to safeguard the community and protect these assets as well. That help kind of move our systems forward. Um, they have been, I have seen sheep grazing on their property firsthand. So they are trying to be stewards of that space as well. Um, they can't really control what's happening outside of their property. So that's, that's a kind of an ongoing conversation with the community. About how do we better manage a lot of those fallow lands or agricultural lands around, around the community? That's kind of like a, a bigger picture thing. But it is good to see, you know, those landowners and those leaseholders. Being better stewards of their space, um, and trying to manage a lot of those, those dry grasses when they can. Yeah, and it, it's an ongoing conversation about, you know, not just fire safety, but we're. We're bringing online a lot of these systems with advanced technology. What, what happens to it at the end of the day? Like they have a, a twenty-five year sort of lease and a project. What, you know, what are we going to do with a lot of those systems at the end of their life? So that's a kind of like a. We need to really look into cradle-to-grave policies with a lot of these systems and really build that into policy rather than. Making it a condition on an applicant after the fact. So it, there's kind of some mindset we have to kind of change around that. So I'm looking forward to diving a little bit more. Yes, no, no.
Um.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Gotta talk to that guy because I've been in the Zoom and it's hard to hear sometimes, so, but I'm talking to you. Back to the wastewater issue, kind of following on that. I haven't heard much. Mention of solid waste.
Yep.
Last I heard, the Hilo landfill was full. We're trucking it to Kona. We have very inadequate opportunities for recycling, even though we have a lot of people who. Would participate in that. So, um, I wonder what your thoughts are about that priority and what the latest. View is on solid waste from the county plan.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, you're right. A lot of attention has been paid on wastewater. I mean, we see that as kind of like a. All, all these things are, you know, have potential for catastrophe and we see the, the wastewater is kind of that leading. That leading edge of it all. Um, the, the county is making a large investment. In our Hilo wastewater treatment facility at the tune of three hundred million dollars. And potentially needing more going forward. Uh, that, that is one of those systems that has failed and we've seen challenges with it and uh. All those communities there are, are feeling that impact of that one singular facility. And we're also investing dollars in the Kona treatment as well. Um, so that, that has been for the past, you know, this administration, past administration has really been a, a key, key piece of it all, but. I do hear you on the solid waste, absolutely. I mean, these are things that in my comp, I had a, I was able to meet with. Wes Segawa, who was appointed a director for environmental management before council and I, I brought up a lot of these concerns, you know. It ranges across the island, but here in District Nine, we don't really have a large, large wastewater treatment facilities, but we are home. To the solid waste for the entire island. So all the solid waste from the island comes to Uwanahu landfill. So all the trash is trucked. Over the side to the west side of the island. Uh, yes, it was on, it was on the shoulders of the east side for a long time. And that, that facility has, has closed and has its own challenges and own issues because of. Potential leaching and all these other issues. Um, there is a lot of, technically, there's a lot of red tape when you're wanting to, to build. New solid waste facilities or expand solid facilities, solid waste facilities. So we need to be better stewards about diversion. Uh, the, the lifespan of the Uwanahu landfill's got about fifteen to twenty years, somewhere in that range. And that's um maybe a conservative estimate. I'm not sure, but it's. It was supposed to last longer, but because we're hauling all the trash over and we're actually hauling sludge over from the Hilo Treatment Facility. So it's, a lot is being added into that space. As well as things that we can be better, better, uh, better divert from that waste stream and see as a resource. So I speak specifically to. The recyclables as well as our organics. Um, and this has kind of been talked about, you know, past, past council members have talked about this, about. What can we do to support, you know, composting efforts on the island? You know, there are, uh, there, there are always going to be some concerns about that with. You know, pests and invasive plants in those kind of spaces, but if we do it properly, I think it shouldn't be an issue. Um, you go to the store and you buy compostable materials and you think I'm doing a fantastic job, but a lot of that stuff. You can't, it doesn't break down in your back, backyard compost bin. Like it, it needs an industrial facility to kind of break down a lot of those. Plastic polymers and all those, the plant, plant plastics really, but yeah, it's um, yeah, so we have some work to do on that front too. But diversion will, you know, reduce a lot of that, that waste stream. Uh, you know, a lot of stuff going on. You go, we've lost a lot of those contracts with international, you know, buyers and companies. And sometimes government doesn't, uh, you know, adjust when markets change. Government's a little bit slower on a lot of these things. So. When we lost those contracts with, in all Chinese partners and companies, they stopped, you know, full stop here on the Hawaii Island and we. And we had such, we had, a lot of us were trained and we trained our families to sort things out. And now we're just seeing it all just go right into the bin. It all goes, everything goes in. Some of us are still sorting our Hi-Five and. Our cardboard and this or that, but it, it wasn't, it's not as robust as it once was. And that's unfortunate. So it's, a lot of it is going into the solid waste landfill.
Um, I really like your point about diversion, organic, and it, it sounds to me like the biggest. Usable product that we throw away is green waste.
Yep.
And if we could put that, those in containers. And bring them to a place where we could compost that.
Yeah.
And it's do that sort at the waste station. That would be. A huge advantage because we'd be using that waste rather than.
Yeah.
Dumping it.
And there, I'll just touch on one last thing because the, on the collections, like our waste collections. I, I don't know. I don't know what it is. We feel, maybe, maybe the word's entitled. I'm not sure, but we, we go to the dumps, the transfer stations and. We can just throw whatever in. We don't really, I don't know, you know, personally, sometimes I throw it too and I don't know how you feel about it, but we. Say, oh, there it goes, and we forget about it, right? If someone's going to truck it off and take it away, where we don't really have an ownership of what we're actually putting into the space. So it's, it's. It's also a greater conversation with our state partners about what comes to the islands, what's allowable here, all these sort of things, right? There are bigger, bigger conversations to have about our responsibility for the Ina or these spaces. And next generation, all, all these sort of things and how to reduce impact overall. So I'm grateful to have that, those thoughts and. On, have these conversations going forward. Yes.
Before we take another question, are there any questions in the chat?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Well, this is Segways, and just to let you know that Deborah Winters was former president of Sustainable Koala. So that, that organization in North Koala has some really good ideas and, and, and uh, solutions, I think. Um, that can be, that can be implemented, but mine also has to deal with fire and resources. But the one resource we haven't talked about that's also impacted by affordable housing or development is water. And the Department of Water Supply is a quasi, quasi-government um organization that is not meeting the needs. Um, individual and development that is going on. And so we're seeing a greater proliferation. Of private wells, which was a problem in Maui. And I think that we have a, a future risk in the privatization of water on Hawaii Island.
Okay, thank you, John. I appreciate that. Yeah, I was, um, you know, this past Wednesday, Department of Water Supply had a big meeting here in Waimea. Uh, they're talking about really their systems here on Hawaii County. And also some of those conversations were also had up in Koala with the Sea Worms, so the State Commission on Water Resource Management. So there are a lot of these different agencies that are regulating, responsible parties of partnered with, you know, on the question of water. And I think it's, uh, there's a, there's these hurdles and challenges about. Who, who, who do I speak to about these issues? And, you know, Department of Water Supply give a lot of credit for the work that they do to kind of keep our systems going here. Uh, but they'll, they'll defer a lot of the well conversations to our state bodies and the state Com- uh, Commission on Water Resource Management. Who is, in my personal view, is on, you know, not funded enough. Uh, they don't have enough staff in the field. They've been out across North and South Koala to kind of look at the health of our stream systems. Uh, they have recommendations for uh deep monitoring wells to really understand the health of our aquifers. Um, and we don't have, we're, we're not really investing in that to really understand really the health of those systems. Um, and it's only one piece of it all. There's also the, the community work and partnership with our watershed protectors and those that are actually in the forests up Maoka. Kind of preserving and protecting these spaces and removing ungulates, removing invasive plants and species to really, you know, prop up the health of those areas. But. I, I do hear on the, on the privatization there. A lot of the communities that we see along the Koala coastline, uh, the South Koala coast area and Waikolo Village is one of those examples of a, a large private. Infrastructure, their investment. It is a public utility at the end of the day, but they are uh run by a private entity. And the growth of those areas that we see in Koala Ranch area where there's a private, there are private wells. And that water is then being sold to our homesteaders in Kailapa, so Department of Fine Homeland's at exorbitant rates, right? And those are, those are deals that fell through or subsidies that disappeared. And so those conversations have to move forward. And really, if we're. Trying to support, you know, certain sectors of our community. You know, just don't build places where we're not, not going to have water and potable water. So that, I think they, my understanding is that they had wells in Kailapa. But the, the chlorides, it wasn't, it wasn't a potable water source. They, it's interesting how close Koala Ranch is and their water source was. You know, a bit, bit more, it was better, but, um, yeah, and. These, these communities need, need those water sources. They've been there a long time. Um. And we look up in North Koala where we've had. Lack of redundancy on even just the DWS, the Department of Water Supply wells. So trying to get those, you know, working with John. Those have been kind of a hurdle to kind of bring back online and pounding the department to like, let's look at these systems. Let's. Make sure we have, you know, resilience in the community and that these systems are redundant. And that we look at a lot of those old plantation arrow lines that they need to be replaced. So there's a lot of, there's definitely a lot of work uh to do to bring up to speed. The existing systems really before moving in. And Department of Water Supply has, has, has put a moratorium on the North Koala region. You know, to really limit growth in a lot of those areas, but it's also for that redundancy piece um is lacking and. Um, they've allowed it for, you know, more affordable uh development and those sort of projects. So I think some people are trying to go that route. To be able to then develop that way. So that's something that just to keep an eye on as well. Um, but yeah, it, it, it is a big picture, uh, understanding. The, the health of our streams, the health of our waterways, the health of our forests, all the way Maoko to Makai. So it's also our coastal regions too. Um, in our, on our leeward communities, we're seeing, as I mentioned, like this multi-year drought. You know, a lot of fallow lands and development areas that maybe can't be farmed like people say they might be able to. So there's ongoing conversations about that. And how do we? Really understand and, and work those areas that, that are also going to be protecting our coast, coastal line, our coastline and shoreline there and our, and our reefs. Um. The big storm back in the last spring, we saw Pelekané Bay and Kuaia River just brown, very deep brown. And took a long time to clear all that out. That was just all, all, you know, all the topsoil being washed out. Um, and kind of choking a lot of the corals. And so i- it's, it's this whole big picture of, of healthy systems. From everything in our, uh, all ends of our watershed, you know. Thank you, John.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, we ran out of time. But I would like to just say, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And what, this is wrapped in, it's a dog kerchief.
Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me share a few thoughts. I know I could probably be up here for a lot longer. Politicians sometimes like to talk a lot. I'm, I'm trying not to be that way, but sometimes the systems are very detailed and complex and I. So if you're ever, you know, want to dive further into some of these topics, I'm happy to sit down with you. Hear your, your thoughts or monaho on a lot of these issues. Yeah.
Do you have a newsletter or some way for us?
Thank you.
In touch?
Thanks, thanks Patty. Uh, so if you, on that QR code, there's an opportunity. And it goes to a link tree. There's an opportunity to sign up for my newsletter. Uh, I'm going to be doing a monthly newsletter. That's the plan right now. And I do at the moment also, I'm doing a virtual update. So every other week I do a virtual update. But that's more on the social media side. If any of you are plugged in on that sort of realm. I do it every other week, kind of a, like an update, kind of things I've been engaged with and involved in the community. So looking forward to expanding that. Um, and growing kind of that, that outreach into the community and also doing some of these virtual and uh in-person talks as well. Yeah.
When did your office open up in North Koala?
I'd love, I'd love to get it on Mondays. That's the plan. So it kind of marries up with the CDP and the community groups that are meeting on a regular basis.
We look forward to talking to you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that.
I was just gonna ask if you're gonna have regular office hours at both offices.
You know, it's mainly going to be in the Waimea space, but I want to, you know, schedule time and days in North Koala, kind of spread across the district. Um, and someone can be by, you know, I'd always encourage you to reach out to the office directly if you want to schedule a specific time though. Yeah, that does help. So, because I will be in Hilo and Kona often, with our remoteness in this district. And council on either end of the island. I have found myself in Hilo quite a bit. Yeah, so it, it has been important to bring an established space. In the district to be present in the community. And that's where the, I mean, US constituents aren't always going to come out to. Hilo or Kona. You really want to connect with your council member, kind of where they are. And so it's really important to be in the communities here. Thank you.